I'd like to call and thanks to the Board, an August 5th meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Kettle?
Here.
Member Olson?
Here.
Member Rayfield?
Here.
Member Tyson's here. Member Peterson is on scheduled vacation and has tonight, and Member Luke is on scheduled vacation and asked. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
Kettle with a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing that we have no green cards from the audience to speak on tonight's agenda, Member Kettle, will you please give us a summary of the previous listening session?
I would be happy to, Chair Olson. The session tonight went from 6:00 to 6:45 in the boardroom. We do the number of attendees that we have. Normally, we meet in the back room, but there obviously was not enough. We had approximately 50 attendees. I was standing room only, as the people that are here know. We had 14 speakers who talked about the topics, including critical race theory, masks regarding COVID in our schools, discrimination, choice, and Equity Alliance Minnesota. And that ends my report.
Agenda item number five is... I'm going to take a moment for the superintendent to introduce two new assistant principals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask high school principal, Mr. Jim Caldwell, to step forward. We're fortunate in this district to have hired two incredibly talented assistant principals to replace folks that have moved on for other positions, one at the high school and one at the middle school. Mr. Caldwell?
Member West, Chair of the School Board Superintendent, thank you for allowing me to come and introduce Ms. Sarah Stratton today. Sarah's been with our district for six years. She started as a Vion teacher and worked her way up through her master's degree and her principal license, ended at the high school in the dean position where she has worked tremendously hard. And through an extensive search and interviewing process, we were happy to bring Sarah on board as our assistant principal. So with that, I'll have to go over Sarah for a couple words.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight. I continue building my relationships with people I've already built here within the Forest Lake area. And I really value the relationships that I built with families and students and staff members. And looking forward to continue to create a place for excellence for each individual student.
This Stratton actually is replacing Ms. Haley Lang, who is now our middle school principal, who replaced Mr. Jacobson, who is now our director of teaching and learning. Ms. Haley Lang?
Hi. Evening. It was a trickle down. In fact, I'm just a little more than a massive. I just, maybe you recognize Mr. Van Heskey. He was at our Fourth of July parade. His face was sticking out of some of the bus windows that you may have seen. So you may recognize him, but he was a part of our district and then left for another assistant principal role and is now back in our district and serving our students and serving their families in partnership. So, Mr. Van Heskey?
Everybody, School Board, Dr. Massey. Well, first off, I hope I passed the handing pencil out test. That was part of the job requirement, so I think I got that one down. I told a lot of people that while I did leave Forest Lake for a year, I tried to get back as soon as I could. So it's wonderful to be back. I'm looking forward to serving this community and doing everything we can to partner with families and help out students.
Agenda item five, student achievement. Principal Scott Geary from Lionel Lakes Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Fifteen years ago, I was being introduced as the assistant principal at Southwest, so that brings back some memories. Whenever the signup goes around for principals to present, I always pick August because I feel like we need to have a little bit of lightheartedness in the summertime, hence the no tie insurance. So I apologize if that offends, but I'd like to do something interactive with the board, if I might or may, play a little Kahoot and tell you a little bit about Lionel Lakes this past year and some other general information. So if you would, please, you remain, go to Kahoot.com. It's still up there on the... You can use your phone or your laptop to do this. I'll look over at Member Corcoran's shoulder here. See what's going on. So then you just click on Kahoot, Learning Games Make Learning Awesome. And then on the top right, you'll see signup in a green box. To the left of that, it says play. I want you to just click play. So you should be on a screen that says Kahoot and then an area, enter your game pin. Anybody out there? Yeah, if you're there, go ahead and enter the game pin. And I promise, once we get past this age, it'll be relatively different.
Anything about geographic questions?
There you go. You're good.
Scott, we're getting the number in the screen.
Yep, the 1-2-6-0-6-8-4.
I hope it's not going to ask.
Yes, geographical question.
I think I said...
Oh, Member Rayfield, East Bay. Look at that.
I guess there's a... You can set the software to do family friendly names, which I picked, but you can do that. Now, I'll put it on the line and then close. So we have 1-2-3-4. All right, we're ready to go. So when I click the start button, it'll pop up with a question, and you just have to click on which colored box or symbol matches the correct answer. Okay? All right, here we go. What school district is Lionel Lakes Elementary part of? What I failed to tell you yet, or I will include you in, you get points for how quickly you answer it and correctly. So let's say, Member Rayfield was ahead of Ms. Isis. You would get a little bit extra points if you got it right.
I was like, what are all these shapes?
First question, and the reason I put it up here is Lionel Lakes Elementary School, as you know, is in the heart of Lionel Lakes, the town, the city. And we are often confused with those three other districts. So it's my job and my staff and our outreach to inform folks in the Lionel Lakes area that we are part of the Forest Lake school district. Went to Target the other day. We have Forest Lake during Target down there. All right, here we go. Mr. Brockman, can you...?
No.
Just click next for me. Thank you. Number two. This is that Lionel Lakes, not the district. We gained over 50 students since we were at Lionel Lakes Elementary School.
I was going to say that affects me too.
Because of the district's commitment to in-person learning. And that's what the families told us. They came from Centennial, Illinois, and White Bear Lake and other districts, some north France, because of our commitment to that. So it's a good decision on our part because we all know that in-person learning is the best learning. You can't change your answer. Nope, you're locked in. So if you go ahead and click next. All right, number three. Hopefully, that's a easy question. There you go. Yes, Lionel Lakes Elementary, we offer both Immersion Plus and we offer the STEM programming. And that is also a big draw that when I give tours to families, those are the two questions that come up from the families. Tell me more about STEM, tell me more about the Immersion Plus program. So again, another great decision by the district years ago. Thank you, Mr. Brockman. Number four. Excellent job, everyone. We use Fast Data or the Fast Assessment to get a tour of our students' armpit literacy skills. And the categories are high risk, some risk... I'm sorry, high risk, some risk, low risk, and well above. And every year, my staff, our goal is to move 3% of our kids out of that high risk into any of the other categories. And we achieved that again this year. So hopefully, over time, we'll go down. Yes, sir.
So when you move them out, are you then seeing that moving forward through the...
Yes, into the next grade as well as in the... So they go from high risk to some risk. So percentage of all of them are in some, and then obviously the low risk and the high risk and the all above. All right, number five. All right. We offer guided reading in grades six, five, and six. We do PALS and PayPals in kindergarten one and two, and then Jan Richardson for third, fourth, and fifth. Drop Everything and Read was actually initiative we had at Southwest here, right back when I was the principal there. Sorry, I might have pulled that out. All right, number six. Yes, no candy rewards. I won't say anything else. Number seven. Yes, if you remember last year when I came and presented for August, I did a blooper reel of our news crew. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we weren't able to bring in Tim, our news expert, to go with the sixth graders. What we did instead was add a video club, and any videos we had to make and present to the whole school, we had a club of kids who would come and be the actors for those. So it's kind of a different twist on the news program, but we're hoping to get it back this year depending on how the fall plays out. We're almost done. Three more.
You have to keep answers there.
Remember the green one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we all want Starbucks, Target every day. Science, Technology, Engineering, Math was one of the other in Lionel Lakes. Perfect. Here, what you want to do is grab it and place it in the correct order. So if you think the yellow one's first, you're going to click it and put it to that first box on your screen. Yep, from earliest to latest. Ms. Isis was looking smug over there. Well, that's true. We're going to timeout. However, the other two are... You have to hit the submit button. Sorry. All right. Lionel Lakes Elementary Open, actually designated as a Minnesota school of excellence back when Jan Masterson was the principal several years ago. We maintained that credential. And we added Immersion Plus and STEM and remodeled four years ago with the Bond project, and now I'm the principal there. That's in four years. Perfect. And our last question, I believe. Select all that apply, though. You have to click on all that apply. All right. I wanted to give a shout out to Lisa Sauer. She's phenomenal. You all know her indeed.
Yes.
Well, the real reason for this question and for this highlight is our staff is a range of a third is within five years, the next third is within that six to 15-year range, and then the last third is the 16 to 30-year range. So we have a great staff. They get along well together. Their best interest at heart is the students' learning, and they'll do anything they can to get those students... So... Any questions for me about Lionel Lakes Elementary that came up during that? I don't know. Do you want to show the score, Tim?
No.
No. Really bad. I know. I messed up.
Member Olson, drop your show. She says yes.
She did it.
Well, again, thank you for letting me come in. Hopefully, I'll just give you a little lightheartedness tonight.
One question for you, Scott. Well, typically, our enrollment for Immersion is in fall.
Yes.
Has it consistently kept fall with a rating list?
Yes.
Because I know it's a tough question given COVID here, but...
Yes. We have kindergarten usually at 18 and 20. And we've run that at Lionel every year since I've been there. One year, we did have two sections. I think in my first year, we had two sections. Every year, since we've had a full section of 18 and 20.
That's awesome. And then with the big beautiful building around, do you find you still... I mean, I've been out there when you really take advantage of using that STEM room and that nice big foyer entryway that kids kind of use that for gathering. Is that still...?
It is. Unfortunately, our STEM room, Mr. Big Dan's storage room, probably extra furniture that couldn't be in a classroom because it looks great, it's out.
Okay.
This year, right now, it's actually slowly being put back in the classrooms. Yes, the big commons area in that outdoor classroom, if you're familiar on West End, we have a potential little podium.
Yeah.
Used every day. Yep. It's a wonderful building.
Well, I have a question regarding the 50 students that you did gain.
Yes.
Are these coming back?
I knew you would ask that question. Of the 50 we gained, we currently have about 20 that are going back to wherever they came from, and the other 30 we haven't heard. So we assume they're coming back. So it's still in that game. It's still in that game. Good question.
You know, I'd just like to say I really appreciate the work you've done there. And it's just such a great school, and it's in a good location, and the version and the STEM programs are just really great options for parents in that area, a great choice for them. And so anything that we can do as a board to help you out, keep things running smooth, just be sure we can let us know.
August 21st, Blue Army Day Parade. We're going to march and have the bus, so come on down.
Good parade.
Yeah. Great. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to Positive Happenings. Everybody has ABE flyer, which is Adult Basic Education that you can take over. Guys, anybody else have any Positive Happenings to share?
I just wanted to comment on the stadium, how beautiful it looks. The home bleachers are on the right side, and I know the concession stands aren't really coming together over there. And they're working on the practice field, and nice to see the disc area, track and field stuff. I mean, I don't know if the track's in. Is it in yet, or you know?
The answer will be this area and the track application will be coming next summer.
Very exciting. Hardly wait for that first football game and track meet.
On that note, I'd just add that I have driven by many times because I live in that area, and I have seen kids out there playing football already on the field, and I've seen people walking around the track all of that, almost every time today, so.
I just wanted to add that the practices that started too, I put them all up at Fenway on the field Tuesday night or every... Whenever I make my... That's great to see. And the schedule's out for football, too. I also want to say that at Positive Happenings was being at Arts in the Park and seeing the Forest Lake banner and the presence there. I think that's important to be able to event in town and be collaborating with them and having our banner up and people there. So people can talk about our district.
Can I add one more thing? I also, because I live around here, tend to drive by the old Central Junior High, which is near to me because all three of my kids attended that school. And if you haven't driven by it, I'd suggest you drive by it because it's now looking really, really great. It's almost ready for students.
And on that note, Forest View looks awesome. That Asia's all painted now. So it just stunned you. Made a huge difference. I mean, we know the building is so beautiful inside, and so we know outside that up above roof that was so problematic is all painted and just so nice.
Who's just going to comment? MSBA today, since we all just attended the summer seminar. Dr. Massey did a fabulous job with your staff, what the strategic plan and how it's a living document, and really said how we follow it. Every decision made is based on that plan. So I think it was well, just a well-done presentation. Thank you for that.
Okay, number six reports. City of Forest Lake, Member Tyson?
Yes, the City of Forest Lake has a mandatory water ban that went into effect on July 26th and will be on until the council has a new decision for us. I did talk with Lori Joulson about activities in the park and how they're going. She said the adult courses are not full, but they're very well attended. She said the people that come, come consistently. Grandma comes with the daughter and the teenage daughter, and they all do yoga in the park every week. She said the children's classes, the art creative, kids create, are full. And she said the parents come with their coffee, some of them walk, some of them drive and watch the kids, and they have time for community themselves and time to visit. So that's good to hear, that collaboration where all the activities are $5. Also, one thing I want to mention lastly is that there's a downtown planning process for the City of Forest Lake. It's a long-term investment. I went on their website. There's a framework on there, which includes a Word wall, project downloads, so you can look at actually what some of the projects look like, and interactive maps. So that concludes my report.
Northeast 916, Member Kettle?
The Northeast Metro 916 Board, which I am a member, met last night. We talked about legislative update. We talked about QCOM. We talked about how they're going to take what we use, which is Board Book for our meetings. They're switching over to the Board Book system. We had a superintendents report from Valerie Ball, who is the new superintendent. It was her first meeting that she actually administered, so it's kind of a great thing. And I should have said upfront, it was in person, which was the first meeting that I have attended in person with that board since I joined that board. So that was great. And last but hardly least, just for the fun of it all, Marilyn Forsberg, who many of you probably know, who's been a chair of that district forever, actually became the number one MSBA record holder for the most MSBA points that any person can actually attain in that organization. So if you do know Marilyn, you may want to send her a note and say congratulations.
I did. She's a gem.
And that ends my report.
Number Kettle, Superintendent report, Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mr. Scott Geary and his presentation, I just want to recognize the incredible leadership that he's providing down there, offering innovative programs in STEM and immersion. It is a highlight for our district, and the teachers there are just doing amazing work preparing kids for the future. So headlock to Scott and his leadership. I would also like to thank the parents and community members who came out to tonight's listening session, as well as those who have reached out over the last several weeks and shared concerns regarding course content and topics. We value your input and the time you have taken to bring concerns forward. Many of the concerns centered around critical race theory, as we heard tonight, and questions about what is being taught in our classrooms. Our role as educators is to teach to the Minnesota standards and district learner outcomes. And in doing so, aligning district curriculum and instruction to these standards and outcomes. The mission is to teach in a way that provides comprehensive perspectives and viewpoints, and to do so in an unbiased, objective manner that is absent of a teacher's political or religious perspective or beliefs. Ultimately, our task is to help our students become critical thinkers, where they form their own conclusions and opinions, and to refrain from telling the students what they're thinking. Later in the agenda, you will be asked to approve a resolution that defines protocols for the start of the school year. Largely, the resolution calls for our schools to be fully open for all students at the start of the school year. We will be providing the distance learning option for students in grades K6, and the recommendation that staff and students wear masks when indoors, but that mask will not be required. We are currently taking enrollment for Ranger Academy, our distance learning program for K6, and the full online program for those grades. Staffing for this program will depend on the number of students that elect or families that elect this option for their students. As mentioned earlier, and Mr. Brockman will pull up a picture for me, if you would, the high school athletic field is working its way toward completion. We fully expect to have soccer and football events on the field this fall with lacrosse, and the first home track meet in over 25 years in this district. The compots will be equipped with a nine-lane track, an artificial turf field, a new concession stand, a ticket booth, with indoor restroom facilities, new home and visitor bleachers and press box, and onsite team meeting rooms. The auxiliary field will also have artificial turf and is designed with a softball field and markings for soccer, lacrosse, and football. In addition, the practice field just outside our parking lot here has been remodeled to include an updated irrigation system, drainage, and natural grass turf. It is important to stress that this project follows the 2015 Bond referendum, where we've upgraded all of our buildings, and follows the successful 2018 operating referendum with increasing tax base in the Forest Lake area school district, additional school financing tools that we didn't have available five, six, seven, eight years ago. This project is done without increasing any property tax or business tax in this community. It is a real pride for the district and hopefully a pride for our community. With that, at the end of the report, I'll take any questions.
Superintendent Massey, I have a question regarding the direction that the home stand faces. Is it true that they face east?
Yeah. For those in our community that sat in those bleachers, they create a vision and imagine the sun, we now have our visitors do that. We love them, and in true sportsmanship spirit, we give them new bleachers with ADA accessibility, but we've geared our home bleachers to the west side facing east, and the sun will set behind us with ADA compliance access for our students with a disability and community members. Thank you for the thought.
It's such a welcome thing to have the ADA accessibility at our stadium.
That's perfect.
It's huge. So, perfect. In the bathroom.
In the bathroom.
Okay, agenda item number seven. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, second? All in favor, say aye. 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 Number eight, Forest Lake area schools staff retirement notices.
Madam Chair, on page 1, you'll see the two submitting retirements, Corinne Hannah, cook manager, and Laurie Matlin, ECFP teacher. So we are certainly indebted to their service to the district and incredible service to our kids over the years.
And I just wanted to add a big congratulations to the both of them. And it was a privilege when I worked with Mary Ann Matlin in early childhood and family development, and she is a gem. 28 years. She was just very inspiring. So congratulations to both of them on their retirement.
16 years and 28 years, those are big shoes to fill. So again, congratulations to them.
I move to accept the staff retirement?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Donations? Number Kettle?
The gifts to the district this, this month, we would like to thank the following organizations for their donations. Cratch O'Brien, Mueller and Associates donated $1,000 to the Forest Lake Area Schools Staff Back to School Program. North Risk Partners donated $500 for the same program. Carpenter's Local Union 322 donated $1,000 for the same program. The Forest Lake Lions Club deserves a real applause for this, but they donated $2,000 to community education for financial assistance for classes through the, through the program. Target Corporation donated $220 donations for Lion Lakes Elementary general purpose use. And last but hardly least, Landmark Insurance Services donated school supplies for the family support program. The total donations for this month came to $4,540. We would like to thank again all of those organizations for their support. And with that, I'd like to make a motion and a roll call to accept with appreciation the contributions that these organizations gave us and permit their uses as designated by the donors.
Do I have a motion, a second? Number Clerk, please take a roll call.
Number Kettle?
Aye.
Number Olson?
Aye.
Number Rayfield?
Aye.
Number Tyson, both aye. Number Peterson is on a scheduled vacation and absent. Number Luther is on a scheduled vacation and absent. Number Corcoran?
Aye.
Page three, resolution regarding 2021 to 2022 in-person learning. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've recently received guidance from Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education regarding protocols and guidance for the start of the school year. Clearly, we are in a very different situation than we were in this time last year. We are not entertaining models for the fully open or hybrid models with distance learning actions. But I'll pause there and just give you a quick summary that we ran summer school this summer with 400, over 450 students at Wyoming Elementary. That building was at capacity this summer. And we had over 150 students in our secondary program at the education center. Those kids did amazing work in an extended summer school, extended by a week, with an interest of expanding learning opportunities for kids that might have missed learning opportunities from the spring of 2019, all the way through this last, last spring. So summer school is a great opportunity to catch up learning wise. We ran summer school for that extended period of time with one identified student COVID case and one identified staff COVID case. Those were identified when the student and the staff knew had to get a COVID task for a procedure. So we ran a highly successful summer school program with unlimited capacity and capacity and without the mask requirement. So we were thrilled with our ability with those mitigation efforts, of course paying attention to student and staff safety. That's always at our forefront, where we're able to do it with masks being optional versus required. And given the current situation with COVID, we know that COVID is increasing currently with Delta variant. We need to pay attention to that. But given what we know now, given the guidance that we received from the Minnesota Department of Health, the resolution that you have in front of you calls for us opening in September, the first day of school, fully open at all grade levels with unlimited capacity in our schools. The guidance is three feet of separation. We'll do that to the best of our ability and we'll recognize and add to that. The guidance also includes that we notify families of COVID cases, but that we are not obligated to contact tracing. Quarantine suits might be close contact. So we will notify families of identified cases. Families can make the choice whether or not they want their case quarantined. That would be part of the plan as we reported that I would ask for your approval tonight. Masks will be strongly recommended but not required. And that goes for staff and students. We, we do encourage families to consider vaccination for kids 12 and up who are knowledgeable for vaccination and for, of course, our faculty. That is a family choice and a faculty choice, there is no requirement there or mandate, of course. And as I mentioned before, families will have the option at grade six to, end up through sixth grade for a distance learning option through the check-in. So with those highlights of the resolution, administration recommends approval.
Do I have a motion for Page 83, resolution regarding 2021, 2022 in-person learning?
Move to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions for Dr. Massey?
I have one question, and I can't state the source where I got this, but what about masks on the bus?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Masks are still a federal requirement on transportation systems. So that federal mandate is still in effect. We don't have any say over it. So masks are required on the bus. Thank you for that clarification. That is in the way solution.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question, but I have a comment. I mean, you know, for me, I think, you know, we're not out of the woods yet. I think there's still a decent number of people that are not vaccinated. And I think that is gonna, you know, we're still going to be seeing some cases. But I think that over the long last year, we did a, we did a pretty good job of trying to get kids in early, get them back into their learning. But we also did a really good job of contract tracing, making sure that if something happened that we took care of that. So I just want to say I, I think we're on the right track here and I just think we need to be just very flexible. And if things start, we're starting to do a lot of contract tracing and we're seeing that a lot of people are, you know, coming to school with COVID or, or we're becoming a place where it gets spread, then I think we're going to have to buckle down a little bit and improve the mask usage. But I think that's, that's a future. I think we can start out with this, see how it goes. If it goes great, then we've done the best we can.
I think you have one question, Dr. Massey, that I talked about the lockers, that they'll be in full usage for, for all the levels.
I'm going to ask Mr. Caldwell and Ms. Lang to, I'm going to call on the friend.
Are lockers going to be in full usage for students?
At the high school, no. At the high school, no. We will ask kids to carry their stuff unless parents call and request that their students have a locker. But we will go just like we did last year. And frankly, since we restructured the high school, our 10, 11, 12 graders have not been using lockers. Or I'm sorry, our 11th and 12th grader, only been assigning them to the ninth grade. And nobody uses their locker. But on a request basis, definitely we will drop the locker to a standard.
Yeah, at the summer meeting, we need to tell students to carry their backpacks right now and use their lockers as needed. Probably morning and afternoon when they first come in with their jackets or their bags. But them getting used to using those is nice, but it's not going to be something we require. And some people have concerns about how heavy their bags are. So if they wanted to put some hooks in their locker, put their hooks in their locker and then just carry their lighter bags for the day and pull their heads needed. But to keep our congregating low, so that kids aren't congregating and always will use the same mitigation strategy as we did last year.
No, I'm just gonna, I'm really glad that you could be distinct. The governor gave us the option to be more flexible with our parents and our staff. It's been a rough year for everyone. And it's such a hot topic, everybody feels really strong about masking or not masking. So I really believe it's nice to let it be in the hands of the parents and the staff to feel what they do is right for their families. And getting the emails, it's, it's a lot. And I just am really thankful you guys are standing up and I get it because your parents, you care about your kids. So it's just, I do appreciate the email that has been very thoughtful and considerate and I do appreciate that. And it's really hard to be making these calls as school board members. We're just following the guidelines that are told for us. So emotional topic for everyone. So thank you for, for understanding and realizing that we're always, we're in this as a team, without trying to do anything that's anything wrong. We're just trying to keep everybody safe, but also I believe parents do have a right to do what's best for their children. So, and until we hear otherwise, I think we're moving the right way. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before you do, can I just add one comment? I think I'd be remiss if we claw forward into the next year without celebrating and recognizing the amazing accomplishment that our system did last year. The ask that we had on our system, our educators and staff across the board to pivot on a dime in March of 19, and to carry through the entire year with distance learning, in-person learning, hybrid learning, was an amazing ask of our system. And we were open and in-person more than any other district around us. There were districts where teachers and staff held out against administration. Our staff came to the table wanting to be in, concerned about their wellbeing, of course, and worked with us to account for that. But they were there day one and throughout the entire school year. We couldn't have slowed it off without our staff. They deserved an incredible amount of recognition for what we accomplished last year. Keying up the opportunity to perform this year. It's important to recognize that.
Can I just ask that we do our staff standing up, like?
Yes, I would start the clap.
We don't do that, do we?
How's that? All right, I'm going to take a roll call now. Number Olson?
Aye.
Number Rayfield?
Aye.
Number Tyson, both aye. Number Peterson is on a scheduled vacation and absent. Number Lee Luther is on a scheduled vacation and absent. Number Corcoran?
Aye.
Number Kettle?
Aye.
All ayes.
Seeing no new business, we will review upcoming calendar dates and Agenda Item 11, regular meeting recesses to go into closed session to discuss negotiation parameters. Question to close this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is closed. Time is right? Yep, Lisa's for five minutes.
Oh, I did? Oh, I don't even remember. I feel like I lost my mind.